I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did it. I did.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled meeting of September 2. Please note, council's all in full attendance. We are gonna, I would like to ask council if I could move a few things. That tends to be a habit lately, doesn't it? But to save some people that are here a little bit of time, under items from council, which is our first item, I know we want to move F2, which is from the city manager's report. We have someone here that we'd like to make a presentation to. Also, well, we'll do that one first. So Tanner, would you, Chief Tanner, could you come forward? And if council doesn't mind, we'll take care of that one first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Recently, on August 20th, Mr. Frank Naranjo was awarded the Robert A. Cabina Award for Citizenship Award from the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. And I wanted to take just a few moments to explain what he did. And about a year ago, he approached me and said, hey, have you ever heard of Shattered Dreams? And I said, absolutely. You know, it's a great program. If you're not aware of it, it's a drinking and driving simulated accident that's done typically at a high school. And it's to show the kids the effects of drinking and driving. And your local law enforcement, your hospital folks are involved. There's a, unfortunately, there's typically a funeral home that's involved. Somebody goes to jail, somebody usually dies in the event. And then you also connect the parents with the program. And Frank asked me, he said, would you support that? And I said, absolutely. I've done that in my prior life a few times, and I know what a big ordeal that was. And I didn't hear from Frank again, you know, for about nine months. And next thing I know, a week later, we were going live with this. And there was a lot of moving parts to put in that production on this past year, but Frank was the driving force. And he really had a passion for that. And it was fantastic. If any of you got to see it in the paper, you got to, maybe had kids that got to be a part of that, we know that it touched a lot of kids. And hopefully, the outcome of those types of events is you make a kid think twice about drinking and driving, getting behind the wheel when they've been driving, drinking or getting in a car if somebody's been doing that. So we were real proud that Frank was nominated and received that award for the Robert A. Cabina Citizenship Award. And we just wanted to bring him up tonight and present him the award. So Frank, congratulations.
Thank you, Frank. Well deserved.
Yeah, he wanted to make sure that we mentioned that last year, the program was done at West High School. And they're already in talks of doing the, doing a production at East High School this year, so.
Wonderful.
Try to make this an annual event.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. I do want, there was a question about the Texas bid system that Councilman Bachnight brought up. I thought maybe we could get just a quick answer on that.
Sure. Mayor, members of council, if I understand the question correctly, or just to give you a little background on the Texas bid system, we actually chose to start doing business with this online portal back in 2009. They do our full bid management process for the procurement function for the city. We chose them primarily because there's zero cost to the city to participate. We're now one of one of, one of 24 participating agencies in the state of Texas. So really, from the city's standpoint, we're getting a wide array of participation here. So again, there's zero cost for the city. On the vendor side, they do still have to register with the portal to access documents. There's two different options. They can register for free, which allows them to search, access any bid documents that they may need, not only for the city of Victoria, but any of those other 23 agencies. There is an option if they want to get automatic email notices. There is an 8995 annual fee to receive those email notifications of anything that matches their selection criteria. But again, that's the only time, that'd be a one-time annual fee to the vendor, unlimited access to documents and bidding from there. There are no charges to submit bids. It's just really, that's the one choice that the vendor has to make, is whether they want the email notification or not. Pretty quick summary of the Texas bid system. It's been very successful for us. One of the best things is we can actually access the number of people that are either accessing the documents, downloading it. So it has a lot of audit criteria behind each bid, and it goes back, you know, for how many ever years we've participated with the system.
Thank you.
Yes.
But the question, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I had to ask attorney a question, but the question was whether or not the person that wanted to bid had to pay to be a member. Is that right? Did you, I didn't hear you.
You can register for free and submit a bid for free, is what he's saying. And I'll follow that up with the contractor that brought it to my attention, make sure that's how they understood it. You get an automatic email if you want to sign up for an annual fee.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
And if there's any, if anybody hears anything different, you know, Mr. Bachnight, if you're getting some, some different information, please share that with me. We can always follow up with the Texas bid system.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that question, because it's important to get clarification. Those kind of things get easily repeated and misunderstood, so. Very good. Okay, we are still under items from council. Council, do y'all have anything in particular you'd like to bring up? Okay. Seeing none, we'll, we'll close that portion and move into citizens' communication. And I would say this, each of the ordinances have a public hearing attached to them.
That's correct.
So we will also have public hearings on specific ordinances as well. But at this point, we'll open citizens' communication if anyone wants to come forward and speak about anything at all. This is the time. Just state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to five minutes as a courtesy.
Good evening to the council members and Mayor Paul Plaschek. My name's David Fisher. I live at 101 E. Lane Street, Victoria, Texas, 77904. I'm also the president of the Victoria Civilian Fire Academy Alumni Association. I wanted to take a brief moment of your time to thank you and to the members of the city council for your consideration on item E. 1 tonight. We have a great opportunity to improve on our rehab response when called upon by the battalion chiefs with the addition of this vehicle. We have an older model vehicle that is 26 years old, and it's becoming more and more difficult to maintain due to a lack of parts available. With this upgrade in equipment, we can continue to support our Victoria Fire Department in any emergency as needed. Again, on behalf of our organization, I would like to thank each member of the council for this opportunity to continue to serve the city of Victoria and the Victoria Fire Department. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name is Matt Wickham, 709 Champions Row, 77904. And I'm currently a member of the Parks Commission. My term expires this, this month. And I believe you have three commissioners to replace. So I'm here today to state my support of Mr. Lee Keeling as a candidate for the commission. Mr. Keeling is a longtime Victoria resident, local attorney. He spends a lot of time outdoors, specifically mostly on the seat of a bicycle. Thomas and I know quite well that, and we unsuccessfully try to stay up with him a lot of the time. He's a very good cyclist, but he's also, has a keen interest in the parks and also the hike and bike trail system. He has time available to do this as well, and Lee is not the kind of guy that sits on boards just to be on boards. I think he'll be a great, great member of the commission. And so as my term expires, there's a number of important items in the near term for the commission. One in particular is the Riverside Master Plan, which we started but have not finished. And I think Lee would have some great input on that. So I'd just like to ask that you consider his, his appointment as Parks Commissioner. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And thank you for your past service, Mr. Wickham, on the Parks Commission.
Hi. My name is Lee Keeling, council, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't quite sure what Mr. Wickham was going to say, but it turned out okay. I just simply wanted to come up and, and let you know of my interest in, in participating on the Parks Board. I think my interest really kind of grows from two different places. One is the fact that we simply see more and more opportunities, I think as a society, we're taking more and more advantage of, of opportunities to undertake healthy activities, to get outside, to do things like that, more so, at least it seems to me, than we used to do. And with additional opportunities, I think we have the, we have the ability to expand, and I've seen it happen. We've made tremendous strides in terms of our, our own park system. The other thing is, and this kind of ties back to the past work I've done with VEDC, I really do think that parks and recreational opportunities are tremendous drivers and can be very, very important in, in making a community an attractive place to live. It's, it's, it makes you, it's the kind of thing that we can do to make you love where you live, not just exist there. And, and those are the, those are kind of the, the two things, I think, that, that led me to, to consider throwing my hat in for this. I won't take any more of your time. I'd appreciate your, your support on that if, if you feel like it's the thing to do. And I look forward to, to, to working for you if we get the chance to. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling. Citizens' communication is still open if anyone else would like to come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close citizens' communication and move into section C, our ordinances. Arf, you want to read that one line?
Sure. Item C. 1 is a second public hearing on the 2014-15 city of Victoria tax rate. Mayor and council, there's no action on this item tonight. It is strictly a public hearing.
So we'll open the public hearing on C. 1, on the tax rate. Anyone who wants to speak to that individual item can come forward, speak now. This is the second. We'll have another on, what day is that?
We have a vote on September the 9th.
With a public hearing also?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C. 1 and move to C. 2.
C. 2 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the city secretary's office, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Okay. Well, let's open a public hearing on that first. Anyone who might speak to that issue. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt, C. 2.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. On C. 2 is their discussion.
Do we know how many pool halls exist in?
Scarlet says 15. Well, that's how many permits we have out there. 15.
And that's all that's, this increases impacting?
Yes, sir.
In this ordinance?
So $10, about 150 bucks.
But you can see the four column, the explanation of costs. We're not covering that cost 100%. You know, the goal would be, unless council wishes for us to cover it 100%, so then we would incrementally increase these fees over the next few years to get us to where we need to be 100%.
Scarlet, question in regards to the explanation of cost. The charges for background checks, how often are those done?
Once a year.
Okay. Any further discussion on C. 2? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, C. 2 passes.
Item C. 3 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the Development Services Department, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading.
Okay, let's open a public hearing on C. 3. If anyone wants to speak to that item alone, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Need a second? You need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question.
Y'all are deep in thought. Discussion, go ahead, Mr. Alvarez.
About to sit down.
Thomas, I'd ask you about that word, vacation. Do we ever get a answer, that plat vacation review fee?
Which word? What page?
Page 3 of the ordinance, down toward the bottom, under plat extension fee.
You had come by my office, and you had asked me the question, and I'm sorry, my mind was elsewhere when you just brought this issue up. Would you repeat the, the question that you had for me the other day?
What, what is that plat vacation?
What is plat vacation?
Review fee.
Occasionally, developers want to vacate, it's called vacate, basically null and void and existing plat. And so the legal term is vacation, plat vacation, so they...
A fancy word for vacate.
Basically, a null and, it's a procedure to ask this county clerk to write null and void over the plat, and the result is the property is no longer platted or governed by that plat. It vacates it.
Further discussion? I think the, I just want to add, the write-up was, the CM 1 was well done.
Thank you.
Very helpful for us to read. Any further discussion on C. 3? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, C. 3 passes.
Item C. 4 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, to provide for charges for lost or damaged library items, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C. 4. If anyone wants to speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to ask, do the fees that you collect, do they go, do they return to the library?
No, those are returned to the general fund.
They're returned to the general fund, okay. All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Actually, all of these fees do.
All of them do. They all funnel.
All the general fund fees go back into the general fund, because those departments are not set up as a revenue.
Sure.
Expense. Now, water waste, water fees, go back into the water waste, water fees, as do solid waste.
I guess I do have one more question then.
Yes.
Do we have any idea what impact this is going to have on the amount of fees we collect? And is it going to have a tangible difference in the collection and the return of, of things that have been checked out? Will it have a tangible benefit as far as the amount of, you know, how successful we are in recovering fees? Do we?
I think what we're trying to do with this one is recover the cost. We basically did time studies to see how long it was going to take the staff to actually do those processing steps. And so you see an increase in processing on this. That's where the increase is. The other one is just an across-the-board fee to clean up the ordinance, so you're just charging one fee when you lose a boxed item, like the box or the covering, the case for that item. I think that as far as return, we have historically certain levels of return of items. I don't know that increasing the fees is going to increase the return rate, per se. I mean, it may have some deterrent for some, but there's always those people that do not return. But I would say that 75%, you're talking, will return eventually. 75 to 80% will be returned.
Well, thank you so much.
Further questions on C. 4? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving to C. 5.
C. 5 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, to increase fees to cover the average cost of providing various public works services, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading.
Let's open the public hearing on C. 5. Anyone who wants to speak to that item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on C. 5, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt, C. 5.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any questions? I see Mr. Short is ready to answer them. Okay, and again, good write-up, a lot of good information in there. Seeing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, C. 6.
C. 6 is an ordinance amending the 2013-2014 city of Victoria general fund budget by transferring $250,000 to the construction fund for the US-59 business in Loop 463 Traffic Signal Project, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading.
Let's open the public hearing on C. 6. Anyone who wants to speak to this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on C. 6. Counsel?
Move, we adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? We've had this come before several times, actually, already, so.
You don't know when that's going to be installed?
We've just, we've just recently completed the design of the project. We're going to be bringing before the council a memorandum of understanding between the city and TaxDOT on the 16th, that, that's a requirement, that that be adopted prior to the federal funds being passed down. Once that's done, we anticipate we will probably bid in October, award in November, and then it will take, you know, maybe six or seven months beyond that, because they'll need to, well, actually, it'll be like, let me look, let me make sure. Probably issue notice to proceed in January, and then it'll be six months, because they, it's like a 90-day lead time on ordering the poles for the thing, so.
Do you know if it's going to have that curve to where you can turn right, like y'all have in Navarro?
Coming off of...
Coming off the loop.
Yes, you will be able to turn right.
Because, I mean, it's stagnant right there all the time.
Right.
So, yeah, okay, I would just want to...
And we will have voted six or seven times on different aspects of this project, which is fine, it just, Mr. Alvarez?
This thing is, yeah, this thing has rocked on for so long, it just, it amazes me on this particular one. Not much we can do about it, mind you, but it's still terribly slow. We were able to put a light up at East High School in a few months, and this thing has been rocking on, tended to rock on for quite some longer. That's, we're all unanimous that it needs to be done.
We're thankful for the financial support from TaxDOT, though, instead of it all coming out of general fund money and, yeah, so.
It's due to no action on our part. It's just the way it is with multiple agencies involved, so.
It is what it is.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that item passes. C. 7?
Is an ordinance amending Schedule 1 of Section 22-9 of the Victoria City Code to add a portion of Northeast Street to the referenced schedule of one-way streets, repealing conflicting parts of, excuse me, repealing parts of conflicting ordinances, providing a penalty not to exceed $500, providing for enforcement, publication, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a first reading.
We'll open the public hearing on C. 7. If anyone wants to speak to that issue. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, I see there's a map.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this, this will amend our traffic ordinance to make a two-block section of Northeast Street between Constitution and Goodwin, one-way northbound with a right-out exit onto Goodwin only. It's being proposed by the railroad to facilitate the addition of a, of a new rail segment that they will install across Goodwin Avenue at that, at that same area. And I don't know the exact timeline on that, but they're, they've been talking like it should be under construction fairly soon. When they first proposed it, staff has looked at the plans, we've gone out and looked at it on the ground. We concur, we agree that this needs to be done in order to make that a safe intersection there. We've talked to, public work staff has talked to the affected residents or anyone around there that would be affected, and they have basically been indifferent to the change, said they were fine with it. And so we're bringing this forward for you to consider this evening.
That's a very narrow street.
It is. It's like 11 feet wide, and they're going to add a new section of track there, parallel to the existing.
And it'll be one-way, really, because there'll be a median in?
It'll be one-way for several, for several reasons. One, one reason is that in order to put the gates across Goodwin, they're going to put a short median section on each side of the tracks, because they've gotten, railroad's gotten away from putting those very long arms that go across multiple lanes. So they'll set a median section there with a gate controller on each one, so that they'll have shorter arms that will close across those lanes. So that's one reason, because then turning left will put you in conflict with one of those median sections. The other reason is because East Street is already so very narrow, and then when you put another track system in there, to have two-way traffic on it is really going to make it dangerous.
Is that railroad right-of-way, or is that city right-of-way?
That's a good question. That is, that is an original four-lead grant. However, it's also shown as railroad right-of-way, so.
That's why it's a good question.
Not worth the fight.
I've always known it to be a gravel road. It's still a gravel road, I think, kind of?
It's got a little asphalt, I thought. Pretty much.
It's, it's a road that's in very bad shape.
I went over there last time this was talked about, and it's, yeah, it's just...
I wish, I wish we could fix that, but worry, you know, my concern will be the people going eastbound on Goodwin are going to be so tempted to turn against the one-way there.
It will have to be signed, do not enter from, from there.
Right. Do we have money in this, in this ordinance? Where are we getting the money to put the signage and all that?
The railroad will do that. That's, it's all the railroad's cost. And they will actually configure that, that intersection to where it, it leads itself to be a right-out only. It will be, not impossible for someone to turn in there wrong, but it will be, it will not, not be geared to, to actually encourage that.
It's, it's an unusual little area. I don't understand why Forest doesn't extend to, and I cannot read that.
All the way to East Street there.
Over the way to Mans.
Oh, Mans, yes, I know.
I went over there, and I, I think there's a vacant lot. It's like, okay, well, I could just drive across the grass. I, I guess that's not ours. I don't know. I'm not worried about it. The traffic volume is very low.
Probably unimproved four-lead grant, right-of-way.
Okay. All right. So everyone understands what's going to happen there.
They talked about in their letter, though, that it's a future quiet zone crossing. Why don't they just make it one now?
I don't think it will qualify for one right now. I think it will have to be tied into some others to make the, the calculations come out to where it's, can be considered for a quiet zone.
When we do the study on quiet zones and we look at our crossings, then, you know, that will be part of that study, so there may not be any additional improvement that's needed to that crossing, so.
If they put the medians in, that should do it. I mean, anyway, I...
They may not be long enough on their own. We just have to see, that's why they may have to tie in with some other...
Well, in your discussions with them, just ask, hey, just, they ought to know how long they gotta be. I mean, so we don't have to go back and, you know. Okay.
Well, that's part of our study on the quiet zone, we'll take, take all that into account. So when we get started on, the consultant gets started on that.
Okay. Now, you know, we'll probably be done before they start on this.
I think they're ready to move on this pretty quickly.
I think they're ready to move.
Yeah, they've been, they've been talking about this for, what, two years now?
A long time.
So...
There've been several renditions of plans come before us.
Yeah, I mean...
Why don't we table it for about six, eight months?
But...
Okay. And on that note...
I'm assuming that's not in the form of a motion.
No, no.
Not a formal motion, no.
No further discussion? All those in favor of C. 7, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1762.82] Thank you. Where are we, consent agenda?
Consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved by a single vote. The first is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 19th, 2014. The second is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two sets of specialized police package equipment for Tahoe Police Vehicles, plus 14 dual-gun racks with retro partitions for patrol vehicles in service from various suppliers via the Texas bid systems for a total amount of $38,248.42, and declaring an effective date. The third is a resolution awarding the North Heights Utility Replacement Project Phase 1, East Sabine Street, to Mercer Construction Company of Edna, Texas, for their low bid of $1,124,759, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Make a motion, we adopt items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those items all pass. Resolutions?
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Victoria Civilian Fire Academy Alumni Association, where the fire agrees to convey a city-owned ambulance that has been retired from service in exchange for the continued rehabilitation services by VCF AAA for the Victoria Fire Department when requested, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Your motion is second. Okay, any discussion?
Just want to say, appreciate what the volunteer fire department does and, and should I say, the volunteer, the volunteers for the Victoria Fire Department volunteers. I can get my...
Civilian Fire Academy alumni.
Yes, sir. I appreciate what they...
That's what you meant to say.
Yes, sir. No, I appreciate what they do, and I know we all do, so thank you for being here tonight.
I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
We have two ambulances that are retired, 2005 and 2007. Why did we pick the 2005?
It was in better, better condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And their truck now is 26 years old, I heard.
Yeah, they, I think in one year, they've spent a little over $6,500 in trying to keep it up and running, and they don't have a revenue stream, so all their money is done by either donations or work that they do to acquire money, so they've, it's been a money drain for them. This will be a great asset for them.
Okay, I'm impressed, yeah. My truck's 15 years old, I thought I was doing pretty good, but...
Tanner, you might just, I know David spoke briefly, but you might just explain a little bit about what all they do when they're out on scenes doing rehab for you guys, so everybody understands that.
Absolutely. Anytime we get, we respond to a working fire of any kind, and we, especially in high temperatures and high humidity, one of the first things our incident commanders will do is they try to recognize the duration in which we feel like we're going to have to be on scene to mitigate this event. And if we're looking at, we're going to be there more than an hour, hour and a half, we go ahead and initiate a rehab unit, and we do that just by calling our dispatch and saying, "We need rehab." And they contact the Alumni Association, and they have the unit over at old Station 2 on Airline. They respond to that place, and they've got everything preloaded in that old ambulance. And they come out to the scene, they set up tents, they set up misters, cool rags, so as these guys come out of that superheated environment, they need to sit down for a few minutes to try to rehab a little bit, they're there, and they provide it for them. It's a great benefit to us because we have to provide rehab to them, period. But that typically means we would have to do it, which means we'd have to send some additional trucks over to provide that service. It enables us to keep those trucks in service, and they're there as long as we need them. I mean, we've been on some scenes where we've been there seven or eight hours, and they've stayed with us for seven or eight hours. We've also utilized them when we do new hire tests. We'll bring in 40 or 50 folks from all around this area, and they have to go through our fitness agility test. Well, that's very labor-intensive as well, and they'll set up a rehab for those folks so that as they get out of the, when they, when they finish the rehab, doing the physical agility, they've got someplace to sit down and get a cold, cool drink out of the hot sun, and so, and they're all volunteers. I mean, they, they just do this, you know, for the love of it, and it blows me away, and I've told them many times how appreciative I am that there's a group out there in the community that is so willing to drop everything they're doing and run to RIA to assist us, and then the way that they raise money. I mean, it breaks your heart knowing what they do, just to try to make a little bit of extra money to keep, to keep their group going, and so I'm, for one, very appreciative that you're considering this because I know it means a lot to them, and they mean a lot to us, and so anything we can do to help them be more successful in the long run is going to help us be more successful as well.
Thank you, Chief. It's well said, well said. Any further comments from counsel? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Motorola Solutions of Schaumburg, Illinois, for maintenance and scheduled upgrades to the 800 megahertz radio system in the amount of $368,256.30 for the current year, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Will we adopt E2?
Second.
Motion is second on E2, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none?
So this is going to be for every two years, we're going to be spending this kind of money? This maintenance agreement is for two years or every year?
This dollar amounts every year.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we on the contract now?
By renewing the maintenance in this fashion, what it will do is by doing a long-term contract, we get a discount. At the end of that contract, for two-year period, we're able to upgrade our entire system, however it's needed, to the next and latest software version, plus any hardware and labor that's needed to make that jump. So it's an all-inclusive price for this cost of maintenance.
Fire and police?
The entire, is city, county, everybody.
That also goes true for the ambulance services?
That all the, all the customers that are on our radio system would partake of the same upgrade.
Any further discussion? It's not to beleaguer, you know, this, it's a lot of money, but it's mission-critical. I mean, this is, communications is something that, it has to work.
The alternative, and I priced the alternative, to do this and continue at the same level of maintenance that we pay today would be approximately $1 million. So by doing this long-term maintenance and adopting to this plan, we spread the cost over many years instead of an upfront cost, is what it's basically doing.
Jesse, it's approximately $120,000 more than we're spending right now.
That is correct.
So, because we have a maintenance cost right now.
This includes all the upgrades and the whole thing?
Hardware, software, labor.
Very good. Counsel, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, we do have a city manager item.
One item, and John's going to get up and talk about this certificate of achievement.
Thank you. The Texas chapter of the American Planning Association conducts an annual peer review process called the Planning Excellence Program. Planning and development departments are reviewed based on a number of criteria, including the level of professional training received by the planning staff, whether training is provided to planning commission members, the professional certifications and registrations that are held by staff, and the extent to which local plans and development regulations are kept up to date. I'm pleased to announce that the City of Victoria has been awarded the 2014 Certificate of Achievement for Planning Excellence, and I'd like to congratulate Development Services Director Jared Mayfield and his department on this award. I don't have a presentation, but I just wanted to recognize Jared and all the work that he does and his staff over there at Development Services. This is probably seventh or eighth time the city's been recognized by APA in this manner, so it's, we appreciate it.
Very good, congratulations.
Good job, sir.
And we expect it every year now in perpetuity, so. I'm kidding, very good job, you and all your staff, thank you. Okay, we do have another item, our board appointments we need to discuss.
Mayor and counsel, the, there are three boards or commissions for consideration. Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission has two members, those are council members currently serving, are Councilman Solis and Councilman Alvarez, and Councilwoman Solis is also on the Board of Directors. So I just need to know if they would like to continue in that capacity, and if counsel would like for me to bring forth a resolution to, at the next meeting, to reappoint them.
I'll take this.
Okay.
I'll be happy to give it to anybody else.
I think you're doing an outstanding job. I really support you over there, Emmett.
That enthusiastic yes and a double pay. Is anyone else interested? Mr. Alvarez, will you continue?
Sure.
Okay. So that, that would just leave those, fill those in, thank you.
Okay, and the next one is the Parks Commission. There are three members who are Michael Hummel, Matt Wickham, and Viola Sines. Mr. Hummel and Mr. Wickham both are ineligible due to term limits, and Mrs. Sines does not wish to be reappointed, so there will be three openings on that commission. There are some applications in the packet, and I also set one before you for Mr. Rivera on the dais for you to consider as well. So I can bring forward a resolution at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I guess we may have to vote like we have in the past?
We have five applications.
Five.
Three slots.
But there's three for the planning and, how many?
One, two, three.
There's three appointments for the Parks Commission.
There's five applicants.
Five individuals that would like to be on, can you read off those five, please? The names?
Diane Flaxlander, Kevin Henderson, Gail Repka, Lee Keeling, and then Mr. Rivera, Mike Rivera.
Okay. Are all, all of these individuals going to go on the ballot, or do we need to nominate individuals to go on the ballot?
You can do it either way. Because we don't have an actual resolution in front of us tonight, that's why you don't have a ballot to actually officially consider them, but if counsel is in consensus that they want certain names on the ballot, or, excuse me, on the resolution, we could go ahead and include those as we're drafting that resolution. But typically, when we have more applicants than we have for positions, we bring you a resolution with blanks, and we do ballots that night. But if you want to do that tonight, we can certainly do that tonight.
Well, but then we could get another application between now and the next meeting as well. Even if we fill in these three names, it could still change again.
Well, I did notice that we don't have the one applicant for the library, is that correct?
There's two. There's two.
For the library board?
So for the Parks Commission, you just want us to bring forward a resolution with blanks?
Well, I think because we have five, and we may have more, we're just going to have to vote.
That's one I don't have.
Go through that process, then we'll fill in those names at the next meeting and have the vote then. Is that okay, counsel?
It's good to me.
And I don't want to discourage anyone who attended tonight out of interest. It's good that you were here, and I know several people left, but that helps, so, okay, so we'll...
The next, the next one is the library commission. There are three members for consideration. Marcos Pares, if that's pronounced correctly, he desires reappointment, and Kimberly Pickens also desires reappointment, and then the joint member who is appointed by both the city and the county, Carl Ruschop, he also desires reappointment. In the past, we have considered those reappointments first to see if, you know, to see if you want to reappoint before we consider any others, and I just need to know if that's what you'd like to do.
Do you want to do that?
I do.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Do you have enough direction then?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, you'll bring that back next meeting for us. Okay.
They desire a reappointment, the commissioner of affairs.
Next, we have, that concludes our city manager reports. We have work session, if needed, on the budget.
Gilbert's going to talk, we know we need to ask for some amendments on the ninth, so he was going to go over those, and then, again, any questions, anybody has about any budget items, we're glad to answer them.
Thank you. Just want to inform counsel, if not tomorrow, by Thursday, city manager will be sending out an email with some proposed changes. I'm going to go list them, but I always send out the package, detail on every adjustment, and also have the highlighted items that's changed that you can reference back to your original document. Basically, in general fund, there's two changes. Ruby, the city manager or executive secretary is retiring. We failed to include an overlapping cost when they bring in the new executive secretary in for training. That cost needs to be adjusted upward. Second, of course, as you recall, back about a month or two weeks ago, PD's auto theft grant came in lower than expected, which subsidized PD's payroll, so I have to go back and in general fund increase PD's payroll costs and also adjust the auto theft grant. And of course, as you well know, the motel tax has to be adjusted for the hotel allocation, for all the outside agency, and also for the Main Street downtown carryover amount of money. And then the last one is the community, no, yeah, Community Development Block Grant. As a result of shifting our project to the splash pad, there's some money adjustment we got to do in that grant too as well. And that's all so far. And I'll be sending that document out hopefully by tomorrow, not for sure, Thursday morning, with every details, with the package and everything else, showing you, here's the original, and this was changing, okay?
You want to amend it on the ninth?
And I plan to come back on the ninth, so you have, well, you have the documentation ahead of you, but I will have the more information on the ninth, and we need to go over it again, but I plan to ask for the amendment on the ninth.
Okay, very good. I think everybody understood that, pretty routine every year. Counsel, did y'all have, on the budget in general, any discussion? I would ask, if not, that's fine, we have several more chances, just if you do have something specific, let staff know ahead of time if possible so that we could be prepared to have a good discussion during a meeting about it, so that also benefits all of us. If it's something somebody thinks of that would help, let Charmel know, and then she can pass it through to us if needed, so that if we do come back, we'll be ready and have a good discussion, so. Okay, no, we'll, we'll end the work session then. We do have an executive session.
Yes. I'd like, before Thomas reads that, just a reminder, we're fixing to get into these meetings, so we've got one next Tuesday, the ninth, we have another one on Thursday, the 11th, and then the 16th is our regular scheduled meeting, so we've got three meetings coming up pretty quickly here, so.
Very good. Okay, all right, let's, Count, Thomas?
Sure. The city council will recess now for executive session on the second day of September 2014 at 5:45 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section 551-2071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Discipline and Order of the Central Department of the Texas State Bar clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
We'll meet upstairs, counsel. Thanks, everyone, for attending.
Yeah, I think so, thank you.